Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few presentations that we have this evening. First off is just an election update for the November 5th, 2019 election.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
We've had a number of inquiries. We do have an election on November 5th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the same polling locations except for, no longer, remind people Braceletally is no longer polling place. Instead, it's St. George's Romanian Church, right next door, virtually, on Nine Mile. The election is proceeding as planned. We've had assistance from the state of Michigan, as well as from Oakland County. And actually, we have someone in-house, our Deputy City Treasurer, Allison Bettis, who for 25 years was a city clerk slash city treasurer in another community. So, we have in-house expertise, as well as our deputy clerk knows how to do elections. And I'm going to turn the floor over to her because she's going to give you some updates on last time to turn in absentee ballots and that sort of thing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Nicole Humphreys, and I'm the Deputy City Clerk. And I just wanted to give some election reminders. The City Clerk office will be open this Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for absentee ballot voting. We will also be open on Monday, November 4th, until 4:00 p.m. for absentee voting. All voters casting their ballot on this day must vote at City Hall. We have booths in the lobby available. On Tuesday, November 5th, the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There is same-day registration for voting this year. And I do want to advise, as the mayor stated, we do have a new precinct location. All of our residents who vote normally at 16 and 20, which was formerly the Braceletally, we are now using the St. George Romanian Orthodox Cathedral at 1-8405 West Nine Mile. We will have signs in front of Braceletally showing that that is no longer our polling location, and signs in front of St. George showing that that is the new polling location. And just one final reminder, this election, all of our precincts are consolidated. So when you go in, you're going to just see precincts 1 and 6, or 16 and 20. We are not splitting them this time.
Okay. Council, did anybody want to add anything to that? We appreciate the update. And again, of course, encourage everybody here and watching today to make sure that you come out and vote.
Definitely.
And make your voice heard. Thank you, Nicole. All right. Next is a presentation of proclamation for Extra Mile Day.
Correct. You may, Council, you may recall that for the last several years, we have joined a national foundation, the Extra Mile Day Foundation, that recognizes local heroes, people who go above and beyond in the community to enhance life in the city of Southfield. So at this point, I'd like to call up, we have four honorees this year. I'd like to call up Gwendolyn Guthrie, Sherri Lavin, Karen Schrock, and Mitchell Simon. They'd come up? So, I'll quickly read the resolution, and then I'm going to talk about our four honorees briefly. So this is a proclamation. We don't have a meeting on November 1st. November 1st is Extra Mile Day in the United States. Whereas, Southfield is a community that appreciates when its citizens go the extra mile in personal effort, service, and volunteerism. And whereas, through various efforts to support the communities, such as the Big Rake, Friends of Southfield Public Arts, the annual Martin Luther King Peace Walk celebration, or serving on an advisory or neighborhood association board, Southfield is a community that chooses to shine the light on those individuals that give of themselves with a total effort to go the extra mile. And whereas, Southfield salutes Extra Mile Honoree Gwendolyn Guthrie for her dedicated service to her neighborhood and beautifying her home, and many others in the Southfield Garden subdivision by sharing, transplanting her perennials and other plants for the beautification of the area. And whereas, Southfield salutes Extra Mile Honoree Sherri Lavin of Lavin's Flower Land for her participation in Southfield's annual Flower Day, for re-landscaping the old fire hall on Nine Mile and donating, planting labor to the restored library fountain. And whereas, Southfield salutes Extra Mile Honoree Karen Schrock for her involvement in the Green Dolphin Neighborhood Association, Southfield High School Levy Middle School PTA, longstanding service to Southfield's Commission on Senior Adults, working to improve the lives and conditions of Southfield's senior adults and families. And whereas, Southfield salutes Extra Mile Day Honoree Mitchell Simon for his outstanding accounting service as treasurer for the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and serving as a member of the Commission on Senior Adults since 1988. And whereas, the 2019 Extra Mile Honorees demonstrate that one person can make a difference, to bring about positive change and improve the quality of life in their community at large. I now therefore resolve that I, Kentson Cyver, Mayor, City of Southfield County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 1st as Extra Mile Day in the city of Southfield. And I want to congratulate and say a little bit more about each of our honorees this evening. I'll start with Mitchell Simon. If you'd come up. I want to present you with this Extra Mile certificate. Mitchell is a longtime resident of the city of Southfield and has served on COSA since 1988. He's a retired accountant. And for the past five years, he's served as treasurer of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and as a board member of the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. In this role, he's taken on the Herculean task of cash accounting for the myriad of home restorations, and reviewing the monthly financial statements for McDonald Towers, River Park Place, and Woodbridge Senior Apartments. So Mitchell, we congratulate you and thank you for your Extra Mile.
Thank you.
Next, Gwendolyn Guthrie. I have gone by Mrs. Guthrie's house for years and said, whoever lives here is doing a phenomenal job of curb appeal. Her house looks lovely. And it's, there's always something blooming. She knows perennials. And so, I knocked on her door last spring, and she said, "Oh, I'm not worthy." I mean, this is, she's really uncomfortable being here, but I made her come. And actually, she flew in from Florida, so I had a strong arm or son to get her here. But anyhow, so then I find out, because she was part of the 2019 Garden Walk, that when you look up and down Jeanette Street, the 18700 block, there is Smith Guthrie's magic. She has, first of all, she's that rare neighbor that talks to all her neighbors. She knows everybody on the block. And some people don't do that. But she has shared her wealth and her knowledge in gardening. And that 18700 block of Jeanette has, is all the more beautiful because of Mrs. Guthrie. So you have gone the extra mile, and want you to know how you are appreciated. And next, we'll talk about Sherri Lavin. Lavin's Flower Land, 10 years ago, was taken over by Sherri Lavin on Nine Mile. It was a failed nursery, as some of you will, or failing nursery, as some of you will remember. And she turned it into a highly successful small business. Besides selling plants, annuals, and bushes, shrub, trees, perennials, all of those things, she goes above and beyond as she counsels her customers on what to plant to combat our voracious deer, deer-resistant plants, gardening advice on soils and all of that. And she maintains a website as well, where residents can go and get advice. So, the other thing that she has done, actually multiple things, she's participated in Southfield Flower Day for years. She also, where she gives 10% discount for purchases made on Flower Day. She also did the, for free, donated all the landscaping. It was very sad-looking, the old fire hall on Nine Mile. And for the completion of the library, restored library fountain, Sherri did all of the planting there, her labor. She had a whole crew out here, and only charged us her cost for the plant. So, we greatly appreciated that. And if that's not enough, she's a volunteer and makes contributions to the Lutheran social services, helping orphaned children. And has done fundraisers for them, including a haunted house. So Sherri, we greatly appreciate your contributions to the city of Southfield. And thank you again for all that you do.
Pleasure.
I think the council wanted to meet all of these folks, right? So, they disappeared on me. Come on back up. You've got to shake the council's hands here. And Karen Schrock. I've known Karen for ages, as she was an active mom in the Southfield Public Schools, all the way through K-12, with Eisenhower Levy, Southfield High School, and has been active in Green Dolphin Neighborhood. And since 2004, as you're all aware, she's been a member of the Southfield Commission on Senior Adults, and is serving as chairperson for the last few years, has taken this body to new heights. And it's quite extraordinary. Mrs. Schrock has left an indelible mark on COSA, and she has engaged the commission in seeking an AARP, Age Friendly Community Designation, for the city of Southfield. And it's how she's done it. Mrs. Schrock's leadership style promotes teamwork, and she delegates so that everything isn't coming from the chair. She has a very, very active commission. And when you have that kind of involvement, the results are all the better. And the result is the COSA Action Plan for Age Friendly Community Designation that was presented, I think in September. So Karen, congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd all please come up.
If you'd all, please, yes, please come forward, come around. Yeah. Our next presentation is the introduction of Miss Michigan USA 2020. How about that?
I'd like to invite Chanel Johnson.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still talking. But I just wanted, I was just saying, she's right here from the city of Southfield. Mr. Brightwell brought this to my attention the other day, and the mayor as well. And so, glad to introduce her to the city, whoever doesn't already know her.
I'm going to get a little short next to her.
So go up, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I didn't realize you were finished speaking. Well, we're very excited, obviously, to have one of our own have this recognition. So, I would like to read a brief proclamation. I'm declaring October 28th, 2019, as Chanel Johnson Day in the city of Southfield. Whereas, Chanel Johnson was born in Detroit, but has lived in Southfield, Michigan since 2001. Chanel attended and graduated from Wiley Groves High School in Beverly Hills, Michigan. Whereas, Chanel Johnson continued her post-secondary education at Wayne State University, and where she received a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice in December of 2016. And whereas, Chanel Johnson, an Oakland County probation officer, has an outstanding reputation in her field. And whereas, Chanel Johnson was crowned Michigan USA in June 2019. She is the first woman from the city of Southfield and from the Michigan Department of Corrections to receive this title. And whereas, Chanel is devoted to her platform of promoting positive behavior and good decision-making among our youth, Chanel plans to make appearances and work with middle schools throughout the metro-Detroit area to engage students and staff in meaningful conversations regarding positive behavior and good decision-making. And whereas, Chanel will represent the state of Michigan in the 2020 USA Pageant in Ohio in next April. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor, Kentson Cyver, City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, extend congratulations and celebrate Chanel Johnson on being crowned Michigan USA. And we here do by proclaim October 28th, 2019, as Chanel Johnson Day in the city of Southfield. And I know the council wants to meet you. All right, sure.
Okay. A little over here?
All right.
Hey, Mike, Mike, you've got to get a picture with us, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the two proclamations that the mayor just presented.
Support? They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the proclamations for Extra Mile Day and for Miss Michigan USA 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brightwell.
I wanted to just, I'm not sure about the sequence of events, but it's all part of Southfield employees. And I've always indicated that when you see something, say something. It came to my attention by way of our receptionist, Mr. Please Moore, that Ms. Johnson was in our city. And I passed it on to Mr. Cruz. And the next thing, and the next thing I know, it was on the agenda. So I just want to thank Mr. Moore, our receptionist, for passing the information on to me. And obviously, there were, I understand, there were different sequences of events. But if nothing else, it goes out to employees, if you see something, say something. And obviously, Ms. Johnson's a very beautiful woman, so he saw something. So, I want to appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mr. Cruz. And we wish you well, Ms. Johnson, in your next stage of process. Making Southfield great again. All right. Animal control update. Chief, are you doing this one here?
Elvin Van, Chief of Police, City of Southfield. And Council, as you are aware, November 16th, we are parting ways with our existing contract with Almost Home. And we are proposing that Council approve the resolution to grant the project with Oakland County Animal Shelter. I did have an opportunity to go visit the shelter. What I will assure this community is, it's a state-of-the-art facility. The staff is very accommodating, parking is plentiful. And also, the fact that the county has coordinated with other police departments, and they are satisfied with the level of service. So with that being said, humbly ask that this is approved.
Okay. Very good. We did talk about this in study already, earlier before the meeting. I don't think there was, if there was any other discussion otherwise. Yeah, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Would you mind explaining, now there's people watching, but, you know, what the new process will be if people find out what's, you know, find a stray animal? Do they still call animal control? Do they, can they come by the shelter that we have in Southfield?
So, Southfield Police Department still will maintain animal control officers. In fact, we're going to enhance that, add an additional animal control officer, which is a budgeted position. And so, the residents can call the Southfield Police Department. We still will pick up the animal if need be. We do encourage the residents to transport the animal themselves if it's safe. It's roughly 20 minutes north of the city of Southfield. The shelter is located at 12,000 North Telegraph in the city of Pontiac. And so, again, we will continue to have service provided. But we do encourage the residents to transport if it's safe.
Can residents drop them off at the current location as well, or do they have to drive out to Pontiac?
So, we still will maintain the shelter as a temporary holding facility. And so, we do ask that the call come into the Southfield Police Department, and we will arrange for an animal control officer to do one of two things. Either meet the resident at their home, or meet them at the shelter for pickup.
Okay. Thank you.
And the correction on the address, 1200 North Telegraph.
1200, 1200 North Telegraph. Okay.
And Mr. President, we, our community relations department will work to get the appropriate notices out pertaining those processes, as well as some information on cable TV and other messaging boards throughout the community.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we move to appointments. First appointment is Don M. King for City Attorney.
This is a happy moment. It's also a little bittersweet. Our city attorney, Beth Ray, who has been with us for a year, has taken another position with more compensation and new challenges. We really appreciate all that Beth has done this year that she's been with us. She's had some really tough, tough things to work through. But Beth has made a real change in the department, in that there is greater involvement with the staff and delegation of duties. And so, that kind of sets the stage for the appointment I'm recommending as mayor to the city council, the appointment of Don M. King as City Attorney effective November 9th, 2019. Beth will be with us until November 8th. Okay? And for those of you that don't know, Don has always been kind of a quiet person, but she's a real worker, very dependable. She's been with the legal department since 2003 as an Assistant City Attorney. And it was last year that we promoted her to Deputy City Attorney. She's a graduate of the Thomas Cooley Law School in Lansing, and Michigan State University with a degree in business. And she's a member of the State Bar Association, and was, to the State Bars Association, was elected to the representative assembly, and is a member of the Michigan Municipal Attorneys Association. And, one more, executive member of the Council of Young Lawyers. Okay? So, Council, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Chair?
Mr. President? Mr. Frazier? I would offer a motion, but before I make that motion, I would like to say that it has been my pleasure to have been on the Legislative Committee this year and worked with Beth Ray. She has been a real support and a help to the Legislative Committee. And I know she's going to be missed by the city of Southfield. But in her place, I would offer the motion that we promote Ms. King to City Attorney. Support?
They're moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we support the promotion of Don King to City Attorney. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there anybody opposed? Congratulations.
So, I am really pleased to be in this position. And as Mayor Cyver stated, Beth Ray has been awesome, not just in this last year, but since I first came in 2003. She was always a great mentor. I'm going to miss her, and I'll probably start crying, but I know where she lives, I have her cell phone number. And so, I am really pleased, and I look forward to serving as City Council.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm the first to post it out there.
Madam Clerk, do we need to swear her in this evening? We're gonna do it on the, on the ninth? Okay.
Why don't we just do, you don't want to do it now?
We have no, we have no meeting, uh, before the ninth, so, uh, she should be sworn in tonight.
Let's get it on camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it.
And while, uh, we're getting ready for that, somebody lost their keys. They're up front here. He's got a trustworthy face. All right. Madam Clerk?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office as City Attorney?
I will.
You need to sign.
And I'd, I would just echo, uh, Mr. Frazier's comments, um, for our outgoing attorney. Uh, we really appreciate her work that she's done over the past year with us, and, uh, guess what? She's following me to work, so now she's coming to OCC, so I'll get to see her some more. But, uh, we really, you did a wonderful job as attorney for the city, and, uh, we appreciate you. And Don, we welcome you with open arms. You know, we're gonna be, it's gonna be a good, uh, opportunity for you, and, um, our city's in good hands.
Yes.
So, now we have two more, um, appointments for the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Um, I am asking the Council to approve the appointment of Jamie Hitchcock, who couldn't be with us tonight, uh, but, uh, she is, uh, I want to intro- introduce her as the superint- new superintendent of Oak Park Schools. We've always, on the Downtown Development Authority, we've always had, uh, a representative of the Oak Park School District, uh, on the, uh, board as, uh, the majority of the DDA area is, uh, or much of it, is in the Oak Park School District. Um, so, uh, Dr. Hitchcock, uh, sends her regrets, um, but, uh, I am asking for her appointment this evening. We also have another vacancy, and this, I, I want to appoint this, uh, gentleman next, standing next to me. Um, this is Tori Van Cobb, and, uh, he is the manager of the Outback Steakhouse, um, of a major restaurant within the DDA, and, uh, I would like to have, uh, uh, Mr. Van Cobb serve on the DDA Board, um, starting, uh, this month. So I'm looking for, uh, a motion.
Does he, does he bring free lunch when he comes?
I do ask the police chief.
Just kidding, Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve the appointments of Jamie Hitchcock and Tori Van Cobb to the DDA.
Support?
All right. They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by, um, Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the appointments of Jamie Hitchcock and Tori Van Cobb to the Downtown Development Authority. Are there any comments or questions?
Uh, with their, their term expiring October the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the commission.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you, and, um, you're official. Thank you. We are gonna swear you in, though, first, and make it extra official.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of the Downtown Development Authority?
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there? We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there?
We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there?
We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there?
We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there?
We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Tori, can you stand up there?
We can get it.
Keep moving his chair. See how it's gonna speak together?
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Morris?
Um, I'd like to pull consent agenda item P.
Which one?
P.
P? Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion for the other agenda items excluding item P for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through R, with the exception of P, R being the, uh, scheduling a council meeting for the city planners' review on November eighth at twelve noon.
Okay.
Support?
Okay. They're moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve agenda, consent agenda item P. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposition. Motion passes. Um, public hearing. Mr. Crowe?
Our, uh, we have only one public hearing tonight, and that is item PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 six, a special use request of Abraham Harden, to allow for the use of residential structures for non-residential purposes, properties located at sixteen nine oh five and sixteen nine one five West Twelve Mile Road. The site is currently zoned OS. Uh, these are the two parcels, um, subject parcels that we're reviewing tonight. It's on the corner of Twelve Mile and Glasgow. These are existing conditions. Um, as I previously stated, the current zoning is OS, office service. Future land use is local mixed use. And, uh, in order for an office use, um, of previous residential structures, they have to be at least two thousand square feet, and that's why it's a special land use. We also do have a site plan that would be discussed after the public hearing, so we'll need two separate actions, but if I could, just for context, um, also introduce those at time, at this time, that is located at sixteen nine oh five and sixteen nine one five West Twelve Mile Road. Construction of an addition between the two existing houses to create one building of at least two thousand four, forty-nine gross square feet for uses in office with it, associate parking and other site amenities. Same subject parcels, and this is conceptually a layout where the building, um, will be connected with a new roof, a new exterior facade, seventeen parking spaces with landscaping, and all the other requirements. And this is a conceptual rendering of those building elevations. With that, um, I'm going to ask the petitioner to come up, make some introductory comments. You'll hold your public hearing, and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions. At the end of the public hearing, I did receive an email today from one of the residents that I would like to read into the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Because, please give your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Shamil Hallabou, and I'm the attorney for the owner of the property. And, uh, I mean, basically, the proposal is to combine the two homes and create a, an office building to comply with the requirement of the city. Uh, we've had a few, uh, meetings with the planning department, as well as the neighbors. We've addressed a lot of issues that has the concern of the neighbors, as well as the planning department, and I think we've, uh, addressed, uh, the majority of them, and I will be more than happy to, um, listen to the suggestions, as well as any recommendation that this body will, uh, require.
Okay. You can have a seat, and we'll open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now open on this particular item. Anyone that would like to speak to this matter, please come to the lectern. You have three minutes to talk. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this particular matter, you may come forward.
Did you already talk about this public hearing? Meaning, did you explain it on the overhead so that people could come up and speak? When did you do it?
That was, that was, that was it.
Could you explain what it is that he's trying to do?
Mr. Crowe?
The, uh, property is zoned OS. Um, it does allow for previously used residential structures to operate as an office service use. Uh, however, the structures have to be a minimum of two thousand square feet, so they're combining the two lots and building in addition to the, basically a breezeway connecting the two structures to meet their minimum two thousand square feet. And the use is office use for copying, filing, printing, and other processing of personal items.
The only question I have is, the residents that are in that area, were they properly notified with, um, the fact that this public hearing was going to take place? You're supposed to notify up to so many feet? Is it three hundred and fifty feet or eight hundred feet? And how the residents feel about it in that area? Thank you.
Again, the public hearing is still open. If there's anyone else that'd like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Through the chair, um, just the, um, question came up, yes, this was properly noticed, required to have a publication at least fifteen days in local newspaper. We also are required to send out notices to all residents within three hundred feet, but it's been the policy of the City of Southfield to contact everyone within three hundred and fifty feet. Um, we also notify the, if there's a registered association within the neighborhood, all the, um, um, association officers get, get notified as well. I did receive one, uh, email today. I'd like to read into the record for your consideration. Uh, this is from Gina Atkinson. Hi, I'm very sick and will not be able to attend the meeting tonight. Um, and I'm just paraphrasing here. Um, she's requesting on behalf of the residents to do a traffic study to observe the amount of traffic we deal with, and also was mentioned at the last meeting, maybe making us a dead-end street. With the construction that is currently going on, fixing our sewers and roads, it's already a nightmare over here. Uh, during the Planning Commission public hearing, we did have, um, a few residents show up, um, that had concerns about the Iraqi consulate, which is located across the street from Class Glow, but, um, this is an independent project. They will be providing support services to help, uh, those being processed, but they are completely independent from the consulate. So the traffic issues that have been, come to our attention over the years are specifically dealing with the consulate, not the site. And, uh, this will provide an additional seventeen parking spaces to help, help alleviate, not resolve any issues that are across the street. And when, when you're, uh, appropriate time, I do have some conditions I'd like to read into the record.
Counsel? Any comments?
Mr. President?
Yeah? Mr. Frazier?
I move that, uh, we approve PSLU one nine dash zero 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 six.
Support?
They're moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve item PSLU one nine dash zero zero six, the special request of Abraham Harden. Are there any other comments or questions? All, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot you wanted to read something in.
Yes, I just, um, you do have on your packet, um, a recommended resolution from the Planning Commission, Planning Department, but, um, there are eleven items. I would like to hide, uh, highlight the last three because they're particular, and they do address some concerns that the residents had. Item nine is, a parking attendant shall be on duty to direct traffic during hours of operation of the proposed new office used during the months of January, February, March, which is their busiest time across the street. Per amended traffic order P one six one dash seventeen, approved by the City Council on Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, three on-street parking spaces, along with appropriate signage, are to be placed on the east side of Glasgow, adjacent to sixteen four four five West Twelve Mile Road. The petitioner is to reimburse the City of Southfield for all costs associated with this request. And finally, the crosswalk shall be striped across Glasgow at the public sidewalk along West Twelve Mile Road, and appropriate pedestrian crossing signs are to be added to alert drivers of the potential for pedestrians in the crosswalk. The petitioner will be responsible for all cost and installation. These recommendations are for the special land use.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, I had a question on one of the uses, or one of the items. The, uh, number eight, um, nope, I'm sorry, number nine, the parking attendant. It says here, the proposed, uh, parking attendant shall be on duty to direct traffic during hours of operation. Um, do we need to specify what those hours are, or will that just be dependent on the business, what they decide?
It is your prerogative to, um, limit hours of operation, and I'm gonna call the petitioner up on what the proposed hours of operation are.
Just office hours, nine to five, maybe eight to five, but probably nine to five, five days a week.
Okay. Um, and then the, the rest of the year, there will not be a parking attendant at all? Is that correct?
These are the busiest times of year, so we wanted to make sure that there was a park, parking attendant during the busy months.
And then what, you know, obviously, you know, the, the traffic is a big concern. What recourse, or what will happen if the city s- does an inspection, or whatever it is, and there's no parking attendant to be found?
Well, this is a special land use, and the city can revoke their special land use approval if they fail to, um, correct any of the conditions. Obviously, we'd like to work with applicants. We usually give them a warning, um, try to work with them first, but these are enforceable conditions as part of your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes. Uh, when you were making your presentation, uh, did I hear you say that there are two lots that are going to be combined?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's two separate lots right now.
Pardon?
There's two separate lots right now.
Yes.
And a lot combination is one of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
Commission, Planning Department, but there are 11 items. I would like to highlight the last three because they're particular, and they do address some concerns that the residents had. Item nine is, a parking attendant shall be on duty to direct traffic during hours of operation of the proposed new office, used during the months of January, February, March, which is their busiest time across the street. Per amended traffic order P161-17, approved by the City Council on Monday, October 21st, 2019, three on-street parking spaces, along with appropriate signage, are to be placed on the east side of Glasgow, adjacent to 16445 West 12 Mile Road. The petitioner is to reimburse the City of Southfield for all costs associated with this request. And finally, the crosswalk shall be striped across Glasgow at the public sidewalk along West 12 Mile Road, and appropriate pedestrian crossing signs are to be added to alert drivers of the potential for pedestrians in the crosswalk. The petitioner will be responsible for all cost and installation. These recommendations are for the special land use.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I had a question on one of the uses, or one of the items. The number eight, nope, I'm sorry, number nine, the parking attendant. It says here, the proposed parking attendant shall be on duty to direct traffic during hours of operation. Do we need to specify what those hours are, or will that just be dependent on the business, what they decide?
It is your prerogative to limit hours of operation, and I'm going to call the petitioner up on what the proposed hours of operation are.
Just office hours, nine to five, maybe eight to five, but probably nine to five, five days a week.
Okay. And then the rest of the year, there will not be a parking attendant at all? Is that correct?
These are the busiest times of year, so we wanted to make sure that there was a parking attendant during the busy months.
And then what, you know, obviously, you know, the, the traffic is a big concern. What recourse, or what will happen if the city does an inspection, or whatever it is? And there's no parking attendant to be found?
Well, this is a special land use, and the city can revoke their special land use approval if they fail to correct any of the conditions. Obviously, we like to work with applicants, we usually give them a warning, try to work with them first, but these are enforceable conditions as part of your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes. When you were making your presentation, did I hear you say that there are two lots that are going to be combined?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's two separate lots right now.
Pardon?
There's two separate lots right now.
Yes.
And a lot combination is one of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brightwell?
But I could probably ask this offline, but did, when, when were they here before us before? Because I'm here, and this is a duplication of information here.
The, your regular study meeting earlier in the month?
Last month?
Earlier in this month.
Right, okay.
Approximately three weeks ago, I believe.
29?
Whatever the standard COW meeting was earlier in the month. So, let me see, 7th, I believe?
Okay.
October 7th.
Okay. All right. All right. We got a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we do have the site plan portion now?
Yep.
I'll just read that in real quick. PSP 19-0005 is a site plan application from Abraham Harden for the construction of an addition between two existing houses to create one building of 2,049 gross square feet for uses in office with associate parking and other site amenities, properties located at 16905 and 16915 West 12 Mile. These are the exact same parcels. The existing parking garages that are detached will come down. And a 17-space parking lot will be installed with barrier-free access. They are required to place a screening wall, and landscape screening around the building with accessible walks, and all the other site plan requirements that the city requires. And I do have a list of conditions that are in your packet for your consideration.
All right. Counsel? Mr. Mandelbaum?
I had a question to Terry. Do they plan to put a sign in front of the building at all? A ground sign or a sign on the building?
I asked the petitioner to come up. Now, we did, we did discuss with them that some minor interpretive signage in Arabic may be required to be installed as far as parking and direction. We also have a turn-out diverter that's required so that people coming to this parking lot can't turn south on Glasgow, but are, would be forced to turn north out of the parking lot. That's one of the conditions of approval.
Okay. But, you know, like a ground, because it's close to the corner, a ground sign or something that may...
Well, whatever they're allowed per, I asked the petitioner to come up, but whatever they're allowed per, per office use is typically a certain size, and has to be 15 feet off the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we would like to have some signage, whether it's on the building or freestanding, whatever the requirements, we'll be more than happy to abide by it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah. On that site plan, there's a double lat, or double space in the parking lot. Is that a handicap?
The, the barrier-free, yes, is, is van accessible with the accessible entrance into the building.
Okay. And how many handicap parking places do they?
They're only required to have one per 25 required parking spaces. If it's one space, it has to be van accessible, so it's, it's a wider access aisle. So one out of every eight required barrier-free has to be van accessible, but they're only required to have one total van accessible space because they're under 25 spaces. But their, their improvements that they're doing to the building will make the accessible entrance from the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSP 19-0005.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve PSP 19-005. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion passes. We'll now move on to our communications portion of the meeting. Our first request for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, residents that are at home watching the council meeting on TV. I want to thank all of you for your calls, your care and concern regarding my husband who had left hip replacement. To all of you that sent text messages and just really surrounded us with your love and concern, we really appreciate it. And he's doing very well, and he aced the surgery. I had an opportunity to watch the last televised meeting, and I've been around the city for a very, very long time speaking, and the residents have grown to love me, like me, not always understand me, agree with me, but one thing that they know, that I'm consistent, and for that, they have given me their approval, their appreciation, and their consideration. It's one thing to get up here and say something, and you don't have your facts or documentation. And I heard something that really alarmed me, and it was talking about Councilman Michael Mandelbaum, and how he's only concerned about his Jewish community. Well, let me put some FYI out there for the people that want to know if a statement like that is true. I'm a member of the Oakland County Democratic Black Caucus, and we have members that are not black that are a part of our organization. This coming Friday, we're having our annual fundraiser, and it's a seafood boil, and the tickets are $50. Everybody knows that Michael Mandelbaum is an Orthodox Jewish person, and he observes the Sabbath every weekend. Michael Mandelbaum purchased a ticket knowing that he would not be able to attend, and told me to donate that ticket to someone that wanted to come, that couldn't afford to come. So if you're going to get up here and just say something about a person's character, at least make sure the information is true. I also heard something about me that it really doesn't even warrant a response. All I'm going to say to the person that got up here and spoke negatively about me, when you've been around the city for almost 40 years, like I have, and residents call you like they've called me over that period of time, you come back to me and talk to me. Until then, I care not to have any conversation or any comments with your inaccurate rhetoric. Invitation is an irri, invitation is an invitation to elevation, and I choose to elevate over that negativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, my last appearance was September 16th, 2019. I told the tale of two legal notices with one legal ordinance number. That ordinance number was 1708, that appeared in the September 5th issue of the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of. The two notices were page 12 and page 14. Tonight, I'd like to address page 12. On page 12, there are two references to an initiated, an initiated law, one of 201. When you have a word like "of" that follows a law, like, like PA or Public Act, or initiated law, that tells you the year the law was passed. So this notice is telling us this law was passed in the year 201. That's 111 years before Emperor Constantine of the Roman Empire converted to Christianity. Obviously, this is a mistake. I've noticed for the last two years now, this city is really getting sloppy in its paperwork. And I will be addressing these errors in the future. Attention to detail is important, especially legal notices. Thank you.
All right. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you doing today? On behalf of all Race and Life Matter, PO Box 2769, zip code 48037. First thing I'm going to like to do today is ask everybody to remember, in Pittsburgh today, 11 of our Jewish brothers and sisters were killed, seven wounded. When you hear me come up here and talk, I'm talking about fairness. I'm talking about every race being treated the same. Our schools are falling apart. One half of the city shouldn't have new schools, and the other half shouldn't, don't have. Everything that I talk about, I do work hard to find out about it. Even with the Fair Housing Survey show, which I just went through here in Southfield's show, when you bring new schools to your community, you bring a better population of people to your community, and overpopulating your community with new housing don't work. Also, I had the opportunity to meet a wonderful lady at this fair, older white lady, and she stated that senior living is too expensive for her to move out of her home. You know, it's just far too expensive. So again, we have to, we have to really get our statistics right when we talk about overbuilding in these school lots, and we have to really get our statistics right when we sharing them with the public. But most of all, we all have to come together and treat one another equal. And, and, and one other thing I like to say, I am so proud of Ms. Don King, I'm so proud of Officer Baron, because when I look at my daughter, Chief Baron, when I look at my son and my daughters and the young kids today, they need to see these black faces in high places. I am very proud to see the elevation of African-American people, which we're going to work hard on that in City of Southfield. Thank you.
I would, I just would let, just say to you, Mr. Harris, you know, that some of your concerns with the schools and such may be better heard at the school board meetings, other than here too. I don't know if you already are, but I would encourage you to. Okay. Just wanted to just pass that along. Our next request for recognition is Ms. Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'll be honest with you, I was not in the mood to be here tonight, but having lost John Conyers yesterday, and within a week ago, Elijah Cummings, it is in their spirit that I am here today for their civic duty of a generation before mine that allows me the opportunity to be here. I have concerns that this council and this city expects me to continue to be patient about the septic tank issue. I can let you know that I feel as though you are stepping on my feet and expecting me to say, excuse me. The city is guilty of not enforcing Ordinance 1571. It is a fact that this ordinance came out in 1998. We have heard our city administrators say that the life expectancy of septic tanks is 30 years. Well, many of those homes had exceeded that when the ordinance was actually adopted. About four months ago, I came to this council and indicated that there were various copies of that letter sent out to residents. On that day, the city administrator refuted me. Last month, he finally agreed. My concern is that for each revision of that letter, it was only done in the best interest of the city and not of its residents. For over 365 days, I have come here to express my concerns about this. I have been called back to the podium twice. Once, to be antagonized, and the second, simply to be told no. There's absolutely no reason why this city today cannot extend the 30-day notice for residents to connect to the city sewer or get certification. There is absolutely no reason why there should not be a 60-day or 90-day rule for residents to do this. When I spoke about this last month, it was refuted. In fact, the city manager said, what are you expecting us to do? Extend another 90-day or another 90-day? That's not it at all. This city knows that it is unlawful in what it is doing. Amendments to rules are made not to deny the few that would abuse it, but to protect the thousands that would benefit from it. I am compelled to say that I am appalled that the Motown mural is still sitting on top of shelf, when just last month, I watched as Rochelle Freeman came here boasting, as our community prided, and that they were able to reach out to Fortune 500 companies to get paint to paint a mural, but we can't reach out to those to help protect and properly store ours.
Our next request for recognition is Carla Shade. Our next request for recognition is Louis Williams.
Louis Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to again express my opposition to the plan to sell a portion of the Northland property to a marijuana grow business for the purpose of selling medical marijuana. Again, I say, if it's such a great idea, let them take that business to some other If it's so needed, so valuable, let Birmingham or Farmington Hills deal with the problems that are expected to come with that business. We don't need it here, and we don't want it here. The council must, certainly must realize that there is a lot of opposition to this plan. At the city council meeting on October 7th, I was present, you'll recall, there was a large number of citizens here expressing their opposition. I attended the city council forums, city council candidates forum on October 3rd. There were 10 candidates present. Eight of the 10 expressed opposition to the council's vote to sell that portion of Northland to, to that, to the business. One of the candidates supported the idea, but they were opposed to it being at Northland. And only one candidate fully supported the vote. That's nine out of the 10 who opposed it in some manner. Our police chief spoke on this issue at a previous council meeting. He did not take a position on the vote, and that's, I don't have a problem with that, but he did express concerns that may come with that business based on his knowledge and previous experience, based on my understanding of his comments. I just, due to the shortness of time, I just urged the city council to reconsider. Councilwoman Morris had suggested we have an open forum, so that more of the citizens could come and express their view on this issue. The council chose not to have that, but I urged the council to reconsider. But I urged the council to reconsider and that you vote to sell that part of Northland to another business. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello, my name is Harold. Ooh, that's loud. Hello, my name is Harold Hill. Initially, I came here to talk about the septic tank issue because it does have safety and health implications. But I did hear something in the study session that redirected my thoughts. And I wanted to find out more information. I want to commend the council for getting an answer about Beechwood closure for the golf course. It closed for the beginning of the season, and it's been closed for the whole duration of the season. So at least they, I did hear from the director of Parks and Recs to talk about that issue, to say that they had no luck finding a company that they could work with during the summertime. And they finally found a company called, I can't find it here, oh yeah, National Golf Federation for the assessment of Beechwood site. But my only concern is, they just found this, and the course is closed now, and they're going to start assessing it in December. Well, December is, there's a lot of leaves on the course. The ground could possibly be frozen. So what type of assessment can you get when you're starting a little bit late? The ground's frozen. I mean, and you're talking about assessing the irrigation. That means you have to dig up the ground to do that. So I just have a concern about the timing of that, that finding. So hopefully, if they don't open it back, hopefully they come up with a dynamic program for the people of Southfield besides just another condominium or something on the land. But it would be great for something exciting to bring some of the youth back to the city. Hopefully, that's an area to look at. But to start this late, how can you get a good assessment? Thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. Hill. The study's going to begin next week, and will be done by January, or December.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Yep. I see what your Michigan shirt on today, too. Don't go out bragging, Harold. Our next request for recognition is Gail Maisy.
Good evening, council. Gail Maisy, care of Post Office, Box 394, Southfield, 48037. I've been sitting quietly, listening to a lot of things that have been said over the last few months, and I think the departure of Mr. Frazier and the loss of his wife over the weekend made it important for me to come up here and speak about the fact that we used, I've been in this city since 1977. I've been an active council watcher since about 1990. And we always build ourselves as a diverse city, a welcoming city. And lately, there seems to be a lot of division, or at least attempted division, between our residents. I had the honor of having an hour-long conversation with Ann Frazier a couple weeks ago. And she and I discussed that very issue. And I feel it necessary to come up here because she's a wonderful woman, and I'm gonna miss her, even though I haven't had a whole lot of ongoing contact with her. I think that it's really important that we take a look at who we are. I feel like I, because my face is the color that it is, have been excluded from some of the things going on around here. I never felt that way before, and I think that it's kind of important that we, we embrace the kind of welcoming community that we used to be. And I'm gonna miss Myron Frazier in that regard just incredibly. So I don't know what else to say to you folks, other than the fact that please remember that we all live here. And we all have needs, and I think the council's been meeting them on a fairly, you know, good basis for a long time. And some years ago, we had a group that tried to divide us along racial lines, and the southwest side of the city formed a little group because we were not about to be divided in that fashion. And I hope we can go back to celebrating our diversity, which still exists, and go on from here.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, resident of Southfield. As I sit here today before this body, it surprises me to see every last one of you sitting there with a bottled water sitting in front of you. After telling us the water is okay, why do you have bottled water? Why aren't you drinking Southfield water? Why are you drinking water that comes from Michigan a hundred miles away, that you paid a premium for, and is filtered? And drinking in front of us as opposed to drinking the same water you say is safe for us to drink, to bathe, to eat, and everything else in? Be leaders. If it's good enough for me, it's good enough for you. Shouldn't we bring in those wild waters up here? Are those environmental hazards that you have sitting up there? Do they, do they go back into the environment well? Or do they cause problems when they break down? Are you showing good examples of being leaders for those that are younger and sitting and looking at this? The percentage that you tested was thirty percent, or thirty homes. That's not even one percent of the residents that live here in Southfield. So you tested less than one percent. Now, if we break it down, was that one percent of the people that were, have well water? Is that one percent of the people that have lead pipes coming in their house? Is that one percent of the people that have copper pipes coming in their house? Since the issue is lead, did you do it at one percent of those pipes that are coming in lead? On my street, I just had this week, two houses demolished. We don't have a sewer line, but we do have lead pipes coming in our house. You think we could get our lead pipes changed, since you won't give us a sewer line? Since that's not important? Or is it the fact that mines is an elder community, and we don't need these things, and we're not important? I just wonder, just where are you at? We shouldn't be divided. I have to agree one hundred percent with Gail. We should not be divided like this. I did not buy a house in Southfield to see the money I spent in my home go down and depreciate. But my house is depreciating because you won't move.
Your time is up, Mr. Keeler. Thank you. Excuse me. All right, we'll move on now to our council portion of the meeting. Council, anything? Mr. Braywell.
As I've done historically, I provide veteran information from the VA. And sometime, it is some heavy stuff. But tonight, I have one that, that one, it's, it is of interest. The VA provides recipes and free cookbooks to veterans. These cookbooks, they are fairly interesting. I might order one myself. Cooking with Ease, a cookbook created for veterans without a home or limited cooking skill and abilities. The cookbook includes microwave recipes, slow cookers, and recipes that require no cooking. So it, it goes without saying that since I've, the VA does quite a bit for veterans. And last week, I indicated where they are giving away refunding $400 million in home loan, loan fees. And I think before that, there was something that dealt with catastrophic disabilities, and the VA was refunding those, also making payments with respect to that. Just for the people at home listening, the site where you can order your different cookbooks, and there are several types. One is a weekly meal planner book, the Cooking with Ease book that just describes, and also a book that contains healthy recipes for breakfast, dinner, side dishes, and desserts, and also a low-sodium cookbook. The cookbook is, you can, when, now obviously, you, you may have a friend or family member or cousin that might be a veteran, so they, they obviously can get access to this. That is the site. I will place this out there in the, in the lobby, in the, in the book rack. And also, if you desire, you can give me a call here by way of the clerk's office, and I can reach back out to you and also provide this information for you. And also for veterans, and the VA has a, a healthy diet and body weight program. It's a, it's a MOVE program. It's called M-O-V-E Weight Management Program. This is for veterans. And if you are in the metro area, you can obviously go down to Dingle, N.R., the N.R. of the VA, and sign up for the MOVE program. Just mention the MOVE program, and they, they will instruct you with respect to weight management and also a healthy diet. But feel free to reach out to me here at City Hall by way of the clerk's office. Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Just a couple events that are coming up. I know some, one of them at least was mentioned last week, but the Southfield Police Department, as well as the Southfield Fire Department, will be hosting a safe, a safety trunk or treat in front of the police department on October 31st, where there will be, besides for safe trick-or-treating or trunk-in-treating, children will have a chance to go into some of the public safety vehicles, get some safety information as well. If you continue driving through, that will take place from six to eight, again, in front of the police station. If you continue driving through to the sports arena, our Southfield Emergency Management Division will have free Halloween candy screening to make sure that there's more treats than tricks from six to nine p.m. I'd also like to mention today is National First Responders Day, so thank you to our Southfield Police and Fire members for all of their service in, in the city. I know that it'd also be in October, we had some pink police cars, as well as pink ribbons and our fire trucks, and I know that a lot of residents appreciated it, as well as thought it was a nice gesture during the month of October. Through the chair to the city administrator, our, our last speaker spoke about the lead, lead pipes in this house. I know that there, I've received calls from residents based on the news in Oak Park, that there, they found some lead levels, low lead levels in their water. But I know that they are working with residents who have lead water mains into their house. They're working on resources to help them get that changed out, or, and I was wondering if we can look into a similar program, if we do have something like that in Southfield, figure out what they're doing, and maybe we can do something similar for those residents. I received a call today from a, a mother who is in one of the construction zones in the city, and with all of the rain over the weekend, there was about six inches of mud. And while the crews were out there today with bulldozers trying to clean it all out, there were, kids had to get to school, and the school bus was scared to go down the street and stop to pick up kids in the intersection. So the bus driver wanted the children to walk before, before the mud started. The problem was, the kids would have to go through the mud. Well, HRC was on site, and some of the workers went, had tall boots in the mud, and piggybacked the children across the street to the bus. And that way, the bus did not have to try to stop and then restart in probably what was six to eight inches of fresh mud. So I thought that that was really nice of HRC to help make sure the children weren't too muddy going into, into the school. Thank you, Beth, for your, your year of service. I know that we'll be in great hands with Dawn. We've already spoken and told her to drink lots of coffee on Mondays. And also, thank you, Myron, again, for all of your years of service. You've been a great mentor, and you will definitely be missed. Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes. First of all, thank you for the comments. I'm sure that you think I did a lot more than I really did, but I'll take it. I, this is my last meeting, so it's bittersweet this evening because I really love this city. And if situations would have been different, I would have attempted to stay on and keep doing the things that I tried to do to make this city a better place. But that's the way life goes sometimes. And I appreciate all the kindness and condolences that were given to me over the weekend. They're well-received. Our family is strong, but no matter how strong you are, you always need extra props. And God is on our side. I would, I would like to make some comments about, the comments that Mr. Keeler made when he came to the podium, or to the lectern about, why do we have bottled water up here? I've been on here, this council, for a long time. We used to have pitchers of water. We had a pitcher of water, and we had glasses. Well, it was kind of messy. It was not only messy, but it was, it wasted water because we, if we didn't drink the water in the pitchers, we, the maintenance people poured it out down the drain. So that wasn't a good thing either. Every once in a while, someone would move something in, in front of them and hit a glass and knock it over and make a mess up here. So the bottled water, if we don't drink it, go, go back in the refrigerator and come up the next time. So actually, it's a, it's a way to preserve the, the health benefits and the ecology. And I can also assure you that I drink copious amounts of Southfield water at home. I bathe in it, brush my teeth in it, drink it, do everything you're supposed to do with water. And I am not afraid of the water that we have. And I really was disturbed that you came to the microphone and said something about lead pipes, when it's not proven that we have the problems that Flint had or other cities. I think we should wait until something is, is proven through testing before we start spreading gossip and rumors. And I'm usually not this cranky, but that really hurt me when you started talking about that. So I'm gonna, after twenty-five years of trying to So I'm gonna, after 25 years of trying to be a good guy, I'm gonna end up being a bad guy. But that's what I have to say. Thank you.
You can have the last one. Yeah, you can have the last one. Yeah. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Frazier, for all your years of service. It's just a testament to your commitment to the city to even be here this evening, considering the circumstances. So I've learned a lot from you, and I just hope that the council will be able to, you know, keep demonstrating that type of integrity and honor and commitment that you've shown. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Dawn, and thank you to Beth for the work that you're putting in this past year. But I do have a quick question to the chief. I got another call. I talked to you about it, maybe about a month ago, a resident called about some concerns about traffic. If you're traveling east on Ten Mile, there are a lot of people who, for some reason or another, are trying to make a left-hand turn at the Ten Mile and Greenfield entryway there. And there is a no-turn-left sign, but they seem to ignore it. And I don't know if things are getting escalated with the traffic issues over there with the construction. So I don't know if you've got an opportunity to get an officer out there just to take a look or monitor?
And so, yes, we have deployed officers over there. And then, in fact, more presence, more sustainability will happen effective November 7th when we deploy our traffic unit. But yes, in the interim, we do have officers patrolling that area and writing tickets accordingly.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If I may, I live right by the intersection. I see it all the time. And I know that I've been working with Sergeant Lanzon and trying to get some patrol there. And I've reached out to Oak Park and state police as well. Somebody told me yesterday, and I don't know if it's true, but the driving app, WAYS, is, this is what I was told, I haven't verified it, is telling people that they can make the left turn rather than the Michigan left.
The driving app, what?
WAYS.
W-A-Y-S?
W-A-Z-E. So I think if we can find a way to correct that as well.
Right. I'm looking to it, yeah. And just to further that point for councilwoman. So we are working with, as mentioned with Oak Park, because this issue came up about a month and a half ago as well, even before you brought it to our attention. And we did coordinate between the two cities. We are putting attention to that area.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, was it, if someone had made a left turn over Ten Mile at Greenfield, the moment they made their left turn, are they in Oak Park?
Correct. That's when they cross over, yes.
Is that we can, obviously, if our officers can, if they're regular, are they where?
Right, so it's still a common boundary, a common boundary road area. So Oak Park and Southfield can enforce at that area, yeah.
Yeah, but the do-not-turn-left sign is on the Southfield side of the street.
Yeah, if there's an app telling people to make that turn, follow the app.
Right. And we're looking to this app as well to see what we can do. Maybe contact the powers that be in that world to make the correction, yeah.
Thank you, chief.
Well, I too also just want to just echo everybody's sentiments about Mr. Frazier. This is gonna be a huge loss for us here on this council, but it's not a loss for us here in the city, because I can rest assured he won't be quiet about anything going wrong. Like I said, I still remember him being, he's the voice of reason. He's gonna come in and let us know when we're doing something wrong, or right for that matter. So, but I have really appreciated his mentorship over the last, I think I've been on here now five years, six years. I don't know. This is really hard.
Me too.
I don't want to get broken down here. So we're gonna miss you, man. I also just want to mention, on a brighter note, if you will, our mayor received an award recently, the Torture Wisdom Foundation, along with the Southfield Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority named Mayor Ken Seaver as the 2019 Icon Honoree at his eighth Honoring Local Heroes Award Gala last Friday evening. The icon award is given to people that have made major contributions in the community enrichment, in scholarship, and in cultural arts. And if you know anything about our mayor, you know that he checks all those boxes. So we want to wish him congratulations on his award. Let's give him a hand. And with that out, yes, sir, Mr. Brightwell.
I was just, Myron, I think I said it last week, and we caught it on video. He caught my words on the video, and we presented the video. But I felt everybody else we were saying something, so I didn't want the audience to think I didn't care about this old man over here. No, but Myron is a very solid, good individual. And obviously, what I mentioned before is that I was aware of him when I, with AT&amp;T, he had a reputation of being a very solid manager, a very upright and standing person, and someone to be respected. So when I got on council, I kind of looked at him from a leadership standpoint and how he acted with respect to getting things done. So all of us learned by way of experiencing, and so by noticing how Myron got certain things done, I automatically picked up some of those, subconsciously picked up some of those habits also. But also, I hate to see Beth leave because I got to know her here, and I have picked up the phone numerous times to bounce things off of her. And I jokingly mentioned when Dawn was, when I was shaking her hand, that I'm gonna really work you hard. But I got to know Dawn, too, when she was acting. And she and I met frequently, and so when I said I would work you hard, that was a reminder of the fact when she was acting, she and I met frequently, dealing with some very, some very touchy issues. So, but that all said, I would welcome you aboard, and I know that your physical trainer is my next-door neighbor, so I will know how to get in touch with you. So, but finally, I respect Mr. Frazier. I hate to see him go, and it's a big loss. But as a citizen of the city of Southfield, I know I've benefited from his council work over the past 20 years. So, Myron, you can rest assured that you have seven people that like you, seven council people at a minimum. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You count him as one of seven? I guess he likes himself. Good, all right. So that being said, Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you.
All of my items have already been discussed this evening, but I do want to wish Beth a great success in her next endeavor. And we saluted Myron a week ago. And as everyone else has said, you've made a great contribution, and we will certainly miss you, but you're not going away, so we know where you are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Zorn?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak to the water comments. The city of Southfield did do 30 samples. Roughly, we have 26 sections in the city. One, in excess of one sample per section. It's a random testing. The state of Michigan has the highest lead standards in the country. We passed in all 30 samples. It is, I've said before and shared with council, I'm told that in the '70s, the city started replacing a lot of the lead lines. That is a private function, where the line connects from our right-of-way to your home, as typically. But the city, and I'm not sure the genesis of how or why that started, but we were clearly ahead of the game. I'll also share with you that the work we did with NSP, NSRI, we've done a substantial amount of environmental testing in those homes, and we're not finding lead piping in the homes. I think out of 75 homes we worked on, we found one where we had lead, and we went in and removed it. You know, so we'll obviously continue to work with our residents. But the highest standard in the country, all 30 samples in Southfield passed. I'll be candid, I'm scratching my head trying to figure out the fall state bit. We're told that the fall state is supposed to protect us. And yet, Oak Park, Royal Oak, and these other communities are still coming back higher. So there must be a higher lead content in those pipes. We're gonna continue to monitor this situation, work with the Great Lakes Water Authority, as well as SAQ. But all 30 samples were submitted to the Eagle, the former MDQ, on time prior to September 30th, and all of our samples passed. We issue a water quality report on an annual basis. The lead results are incorporated in that sample. I want to thank people in Section 24. As Councilman Mandelbaum mentioned earlier, I drove through the neighborhood yesterday after Saturday's rain. It was not a pretty sight. Our contractors are out there trying to get that cleaned up. We had an excessive amount of rain. It is a, this morning, it was still a muddy mess. And we're gonna get out there, get it swept up and cleaned. And if a little bit of dry weather, we should be able to make some progress on that. I want to comment on septic sewer again. Lot of discussion. 1998, cities received $38 million of state revolving loan money. That, the genesis of that money is from the federal government. So there have been questions, why don't we go after federal money to get this, to pay for it? What paid for this initially was federal money. During the stimulus in 2010, when we all were doing our shovel-ready list and submitting projects to the feds and to the state, we submitted the private connections to be told Southfield already got help, and that that lead line, or I'm sorry, that sewer line is a private function. Just like when your roof needs to be replaced, or your garage door needs to be replaced, that's a private function. When that program was put together, $38 million in debt the city took on. We were counting on roughly $14 million to come from the 2,000 residents who were impacted. So that's how this TAP fee came up with, and it originally started at $7,000. It went up incrementally to $700. That's the way the original ordinance was written. And when council, this council reduced that from $7,800 down to $5,000. So you've already reduced that by, $7,800 reduced it by $28,000, $2,800 to $5,000. I have been involved in conversations as recently as a month ago with MDQ, now Eagle, discussing this matter. The state likes the types of things the city has set up. You have a loan program for the TAP fee, as well as a loan program for the connection. When that was originally set up, it was 6%. We've reduced that from 6% to 3%. I've sat in this meeting and listened, I heard last Tuesday's Fair Housing Meeting, someone made reference that $80,000 was spent on one of these connections. I've got 200-plus records. The average is in the $13,000 range. And I've listened in this meeting and heard this number escalate from $30,000 to $40,000 to $60,000, and last Tuesday, it became $80,000. I'm happy to have code go through, and we'll show you every loan. Now, it's possible that an individual who did not have a loan from us had some higher number, but we haven't seen it in any of our permits or any of the loans we've processed. So I want to disclose that. The average is around $13,000. I get, and the administration get, and I know all of the council members understand, $13,000 is a big hit for any of us. I mean, folks don't have that kind of money. We all get that. But at the same time, this, you know, this is unfortunately a homeowner's responsibility. I've sat in this room, and people said people have lost their homes. Going through five years' worth of tax foreclosures, no one has lost their home because of this. On the timeline to connect, yes, the letters do, I distributed the five letters. Three years ago, we started out with six letters. The letters do state that you need to be in compliance. If you fail to comply, court action could happen. That doesn't happen unless someone completely repeatedly ignores us. All three of our judges work with people. But more importantly, before we get in front of a judge, we have exhausted every resource. I think out of the first two years, only, I think the number is 12 people went in front of judges, and we managed working out all 12 of those cases. So my code enforcement, Maria Calhoun, is, I think, has done a real good job. And I agree that Ms. Jackson's right. There should have been an inspection every three years. But originally, we contacted, we contracted with Oakland County, and they weren't getting 100 done a year. There were 2,000 of these roughly. At 100 a year, it would have taken us 20 years. What's interesting, the ordinance has actually written that the homeowner had the responsibility to get the inspection done. So it is, it's one of those two-way streets. You know, when a law's written, sometimes the obligation comes to the citizen to fulfill. So the last three years, and I was asked, you know, why did we start in 2016? We canceled in 2009, 2010, our relationship with Oakland County Water Resource Commission. We weren't getting enough inspections done. We weren't getting the reports. There are some reports in files, but we also had a housing market that was extremely hard-hit. And at that point, there was, there were two decisions made to eliminate the ready-to-serve fee. The ready-to-serve fee was part of that ordinance that required anyone who was not on city sewer, that they had to pay a fee as the system was ready to serve. That revenue stream has been lost to the entire system. So 2009, 10, we eliminate the ready-to-serve, we cancel our relationship with the county. 2016, the market's coming back. We've seen the numbers. In addition to the market coming back, the city had embarked on one of the largest infrastructure investments in the city. For four years in a row, this council has led Oakland County in infrastructure investment. Those are huge numbers. That's, when we talk about lead, that's all part of that, relining these pipes, making sure our system is rebuilt, you know, with state-of-the-art technology. It's all part of making sure we have a safe, clean water system. The sewer system is about removing that waste away from the, getting it out of our storm system. Tonight, a few minutes, you're gonna be asked to enact some revisions to our stormwater ordinance, which puts us in compliance with the state. So there's, this is, it's a complex issue. We all agree it's very challenging. My last comment on this, 2016, we took a SWAT team approach, divided the city into three-year strategy. For the first time in the city's history, we've gotten through that strategy. And it's been painful, folks. You folks have, you've heard it repeatedly, but you've got there. You know, you gotta, you know, baby steps, and you're taking them. We also created for residents who are income-eligible using U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Income Guidelines, a program that the homeowner doesn't have to pay anything. And I believe, you know, every month, we're processing three or four of those. You know, so that's meant to help our residents who are on fixed incomes, our seniors in a lot of cases, or sometimes it's, you know, a family going through a life-changing event. You know, dad's lost his job, or some other life event. We're gonna continue to work through this. I know it's not gonna be easy. But we've got through that cycle once. We'll start again. The administration is happy to hear comments on those letters. If there's any thoughts how we can, you know, make it easier, we'll continue to work in that direction. And just a closing note, I want to thank Beth Ray. It's been, in my 11 years, probably one of the most complex years of legal issues, from the complexities of the Northland real estate transaction. You're in, I know I'm spending, you know, six to eight hours a week. eight hours a week on this project, I know you're spending the equivalent amount of time reading, uh, legal documents that get real, real intense at times, um, dealing with the sex doll brothel thing, which none of us in this room knew what it was, and we're all scratching our heads, help us. Um, we've had some really challenging years, and I've really enjoyed it, Beth. I too have your phone number, I don't know where you live, but I've got your phone number, and I considered you, you know, a part of, you know, an outstanding member of our management team, and you're gonna be missed by myself and all of the managers and employees here. Um, to Dawn King, worked with you for 11 years now, and, um, your voice, I, I know not to upset you, but, um, you've been in the trenches on these projects, and they're complex, and I think we're gonna have a very smooth transition, and I'm excited about that. Myron, um, I, I think the world of you, I've been fortunate enough to have been blessed with a, a, a good, solid father, but I also know that our common creator gives us many role models in our lives, and you've been one of those to me, and I am forever grateful.
Thank you.
Wish the best to you and your family, I got your number too, so I'm looking for to at least getting your counsel and lunch, and, uh, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zorn, Madam Attorney, any last words?
Oh, um, no, um, nothing from the legal department tonight, other than, uh, thank you for allowing me to serve you, it's been a, a real learning experience, and I've really enjoyed it, and thank you to the mayor, and to Fred, and to the clerk's office, and all the department heads, it's, it's really been a great experience, and I wish Dawn every bit of luck, and of course, you can always call me. And, um, I also want to, um, wish you, Mr. Frazier, um, the best of luck, you've served with so many years of integrity and honesty, and it's just...
Thank you.
Really gonna miss you.
I'm gonna have to buy a new hat.
Thank you for your service.
I'm gonna have to buy a new hat.
Pardon?
I'm gonna have to buy a new hat.
Yeah. So, thank you again.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes. First, uh, Councilwoman Frazier, I'm gonna say the clerk's office, we are really gonna miss you. We love you.
Thank you.
Um, to Beth, we're gonna miss you. I've worked closely with you for the last year, and your legal knowledge really helped me, so I'm definitely gonna miss you. Dawn, congratulations, you're still stuck with me. Okay. That's it?
All right, thank you. And, uh, we're gonna be meeting before the next, before the election, right, so, anything on the election?
Um, this Saturday, we, I want to reiterate that we are open from 7 to 3 for absentee voting this Saturday. Now, this Friday, we are also open till 5 o'clock, and Monday, 8 to 4, 4 o'clock is the end for absentee voting, and if you vote, you must vote here in City Hall.
Great, thank you. Just want to make sure we get that out again, I want as many people to come out and vote, uh, as humanly possible, so, uh, let's get on out there, guys. All right, Mr. Treasurer?
I also wanted to echo, uh, the feelings of our, our elected officials. Um, Mr. Frazier, Councilman, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you, you've been definitely a very knowledgeable, wise individual, who has been on the Finance Committee, Council President, and many different roles for the city that you've done, and your heart and your, your total passion has been with us, and, uh, you've been a mentor as well to me, and I appreciate the dedication that you've given us, you're a spiritual person, I know, we've had our discussions, so guide you, uh, guide you through this challenging times, and, uh, give you a long life and, uh, good health going forward.
Thank you.
Uh, Beth, uh, I've had a chance before you became City Attorney, and now this past year as well, um, wish you much success in your future, and I'm sure you'll do well with everything you do, and Dawn, uh, congratulations, and, uh, look forward to working with you. I hear great things about her from outside attorneys, people that had a chance to work with her from the private sector, and so, everyone has been very, very happy that, uh, she was selected by the, by your, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. All right, uh, we got two ordinances to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Morris?
I'd like to make a motion that we enact ordinance number 1713, elimination of illicit discharges and connections to stormwater drainage system.
Support.
Been moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we enact ordinance number 1713, uh, this, uh, elimination of illicit discharges and connection to stormwater drainage systems. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Morris?
I'd like to make a motion that we enact ordinance number 1714, repeal Section 7.396, some of the license required for lawn care services.
Support.
Been moved by Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we enact ordinance 1714, uh, the repeals of Section 7.396, definitions in Sections 3.97, license required and relates to lawn care services. Are there any questions or concerns? Are, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Um, is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, leading the journey.